Item number three, establishment of court.
Ms. Navarro?
Here.
Mr. Nevado?
Here.
Ralph Sora?
Here.
Mayor Enel Harsfield?
Here.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colobilla no was present.
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Item number four, public comment.
Our first speaker is Ruben Chavez. Mr. Chavez, you have three minutes.
Tiene tres minutos, señor Chavez. Yo tengo una propiedad en el siete sesenta Horizon. Yo estuve aquí hablando con Adriana, trató de ayudarme para un requerimiento que me están pidiendo. Esa propiedad yo pago más de veintiséis mil dólares de impuestos, ya tengo más de quince años con ella. Resulta que había una persona ahí que había arrendado ese un espacio y se movió y ahora viene otra persona nueva. Quiso abrirlo, el mismo tipo de negocio y ahora hay una restricción que me exigen que tengo que tener una, por arquitecto, todos los estacionamientos cuando antes no me lo habían pedido. Entonces yo acude aquí con Adriana, trataron ellos de ayudarme según ella y Mike. Este resulta que me estuve que esperar otros tres o cuatro días y cuando ella me abordó me dijo, quisiera darle buenas noticias, dice pero es un requisito. Me dirigí yo con Terrazas aquí y vine y lo abordé que yo necesitaba un plan porque me habían pedido el survey. El arquitecto me pidió un survey, entonces vino y me dijo yo voy a ayudarlo. Y lo que dice, mañana venga para la mañana, dice pero le dije sabes qué, dame que sea permiso para poder empezar algo del negocio ahí, para poder tener para pagar. El arquitecto me cobra más de mil quinientos dólares por hacer el dibujo. Ahora él quiere un survey. Me dieron el plano, en la mañana se lo llevamos al arquitecto y el arquitecto dice esto qué es, esto no es. Este es el plano de todo el lotecino y en el edificio. Dice esto no lo necesitamos, no podemos hacer nada. Y es más, dice, no voy a dejar de hacer un trabajo de ciento cincuenta mil dólares por cobrarte tres mil, cuatro mil dólares, si quieres espérame cuatro, cinco meses, tres meses. Entonces entonces no puedo hacer nada y sin embargo sí tengo que pagar los impuestos. Yo sé que la mayoría se van para las para las escuelas pero aquí también se queda mucha propiedad, bastante. Yo le había comentado aquí Adriana que no sé si en el Middle Drain hay muchos pinos y unos árboles. Yo tuve un negocio de una nursery, la mayoría de esos árboles, yo personalmente, no se estoy refiriendo. Yo personalmente los doné a la ciudad de Socorro hace como unos quince años. Entonces inclusive yo estaba interesado en ayudar para construir un sidewalk de screening pero no hubo quien se interesara en llevarlo a cabo. Y ahora que yo estoy pidiendo nomás un papel firmado para poder empezar un negocito ahí que ya se había usado antes, no me dejan. Se me hace a mí que es, no es justo, no estoy diciendo que es culpa de ella o culpa de alguien. Será culpa aquí de la ciudad de Socorro porque es una vergüenza. Horizon está creciendo enormemente clean, sin restricciones.
Señor Chavez, se le terminó su tiempo.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Perdón.
Margarito Gutiérrez. Señor Gutiérrez, tiene tres minutos.
Se puede empezar, por favor, aquí el señor Gándara, que me ha pedido hablar por mí.
Laura. Good evening, mayor, city council, how are you all today? This is Adriana. I'm here because Mr. Margarito Gutiérrez told me to speak for him. Mister Margarito had to go out and buy a twenty thousand dollar backhoe to fix the street where the city of Socorro collects taxes. You all can't help. All the people in Odom Street helped out to fix that piece of property, okay? This has been going on for a lot of years. I don't see why a citizen of this city has to go and spend his hard earned money when you all have the facilities and the vehicles with what to do. It just doesn't make sense. Little things like this is bringing down this city big time. Horizon Clan, even San Elizario are growing at a faster pace than us, why? Because of these little, little, little things that we have to come here and try to get some help, yet. Who helped you? ¿Quién le ayudó a usted ahí en esa calle?
Nada.
¿La ciudad?
Nada.
Nada, nada. ¿Y qué cuánto tuvo que gastar usted?
En un tractor.
¿Cuánto le valió?
Ten mil dólares.
Ahí está.
Y la gente ahí se poperó para dompes de arena, dompes de tierra porque no podían salir. Las gentes que están adentro con sus carros, mi hijo lo estaba sacando con una cuatro por cuatro. Las señoras, las vecinas tocaron, aquí vinieron y hablaron hasta con el barrendero y nadie les hizo caso. Son unas gentes que pagan impuestos y votan también a Quien Socorro. Yo quisiera que usted sea la atención en eso. Nadie hizo caso, no podía entrar el correo, no podía entrar una ambulancia, no podía entrar nadie ahí. Pero ahora sí, ya está la calle arreglada, para si la ciudad quede manda respectores para que les empiecen artíctes. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
What was the address?
Can we get clarification on the, because I think it was the wrong street that you're talking about.
Yes, Orange Beach.
¿Pero no la Ora, Ora, la calle? La calle, la donde está donde vive Jaco. Ora, no, se llama, la calle. ¿Cómo se llama la?
Orange Beach.
Orange Beach, I apologize, señor, Orange Beach, okay? Come on, let's do something. Let's get this city going. It's at a stalemate, come on. Everybody's growing except who? Socorro. Excuse me, thank you very much.
María Ríos. Señora Ríos, tiene tres minutos.
Sí, simplemente nomás quiero saber por qué están haciendo eso de que si tiene uno un lote grande y puede uno llevar cosas, el lote es de mi hijo, pero él me dio permiso de ir ahí a pagar te- taxes y todo lo que se tiene que pagar. Este, él tiene un trailer ahí y ahora están diciendo que no debe de tener nada de cosas ahí. Entonces quiero saber qué es lo que está pasando, porque no tenemos derecho a nada, es todo, gracias.
Okay.
Que, que, or just. But we have their owners. Okay.
Lorena Rodríguez. Mrs. Rodríguez, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. I'm here on, I live on one zero seven seven one West Burke. I just wanted to pass out some photos. This is pertaining to the Gondaras. As we know, he has a C two, his business is the Socorro Iron and Metal Company LLC and he's running a C two and that's eight thirty-three South Horizon. But I just wanted to pass out that he's ready to scrap business out of that property. And as y'all know, the C two, you're not allowed to have a scrap business on that property. If not so about, he doesn't have to. Um, as you know that, also under the Freedom of Information Act, I found out since December twelfth of two thousand twenty, he doesn't even have a conditional permit for it. So he's not allowed to have that kind of heavy duty commercial salvage on a property like that unless he gets this conditional permit. So once again, under the Freedom of Information Act, he hasn't been, he hasn't submitted. I also want to let you know that he's also, under the Freedom of Information Act, his business registration certificate has been expired since March fifteenth, two thousand eighteen. I'll have that out to you too. The second page on that just shows just an example of what my company. So all I'm asking is for him to, I really don't know what his business is called anymore because I was in court on January tenth when there was an injunction, a temporary injunction. And he said his business was called Socorro, Socorro Iron and Metal. But under his business and registration certificate, the name of the business is Socorro Iron and Metal General Store. So I really don't know what his business is. Is he even registered? So I'm asking the city of Socorro, board members, to please look into it. Once again, it's a C two and he's not allowed to have scrap, like as the picture shows you, it's a picture of a semi truck with his logo on the semi truck. It's a three layer on a flatbed trailer of scrap cars. He's not allowed to use that property for that type of business. So I hope we could either shut him down, find him, and find him every day. He knows he's not supposed to be there. Also, on the court hearing downtown with Judge Moody, he's not supposed to be using that property.
Mrs. Rodríguez, your time is up.
Thank you.
Quijer Mo Gándara, senior? Mr. Gándara, you have three minutes.
I'm not here to talk about my son's business. Her information about the general store is all wrong, okay? Okay, address your officer, she's not supposed to be speaking without him. And I want my time back, okay? Okay?
Yes, sir.
Now I'm here.
Oh, yes, Mr. Gándara.
Her husband or whoever he is has a shop, hot shot business out of that place. And I have the pictures, but they didn't let me. Because we have people now, you know, we have our attorneys taking care of this and I'm not supposed to. But he does have a shop, hot shop business out of there. And if you all don't believe me, go look at it and see if it does it. Okay? Now I am gonna, I don't like to bring these things like this up, but he has his trucks there, his one ton trucks. He does, with his trailers and he loads up backhoes, he loads up little bobcats, which I know they don't belong to him. That's a hot shot business, okay? They want to bring up stuff, well, let's bring it up. We don't care what they do, it's none of our business. I don't see how our business hurts them, I don't see how. And I wasn't, I didn't come to talk about that, okay? It gets, it gets tiresome, you know, it really does, it gets tiresome. And the Gándaras, and the Gándaras. Don't they have a life? Doesn't this city have a life? It's ridiculous, ridiculous. It's all about us. Worry about the city, don't worry about the Gándaras. It's, it's pitiful. It is pitiful. They even bring pictures and pictures and pictures. I've got pictures here on my phone that I could show you about their business. Not in my business. I don't see how our business is infringing on them. I don't know how. And I apologize to you all for getting a little bit, but it's time to cut it out, you know? It's time. It's ridiculous. I apologize for being, I wasn't going to talk about that, but then, you know.
Tom Hick. Mister Hick, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, council members and other folks. My wife presented her point of view. My point of view is entirely different, I'm letting her speak for herself, although I agree with her one hundred and ten percent. What I would like to lighten up the mood here this evening. Every time I go by the old Bercero barracks, I think to myself, hmm, something could be done with that. Why? Well, my business is ranching, I'm a farmer rancher. And I keep current on USDA things and there's a big push for local grown and local raised livestock. And they, the USDA is pushing young people to get involved, to market their stuff to local people, like your local grocery store, to restaurants. And I, my daughter and I were talking about it and she said, you know, that place would be an excellent area for the local people of Socorro and other vendors in the lower valley to bring their wares, whether they be meat, flowers, vegetables. And my thought is, what would happen if the city of Socorro would allow that area to become a farmer's market? Can you imagine the city of Socorro being the forefront of that? And there's USDA push for the young farmers and the families and the members to get involved and there's money, grants and things available. I personally would become involved and help the city in any way, shape or form that I can to make the reality of a farmer's market for the city of Socorro and the surrounding area become a farmer's market down there. That's what I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, those were all our speakers.
Item number five, presentation by city manager regarding November two thousand nineteen monthly report.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm going to provide you some highlights for the month of December. Our municipal courts department collected seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars, received five hundred and thirty-nine citations from Socorro PD, thirty-two citations from DPS and ninety-two ordinance violations. Our HR department employee of the month for November and December were celebrated on December twentieth. For the month was the Parks and Public Works Department and for the employee of the year was Alejandra Valades. We had three employees out on intermittent FMLA, one from planning and zoning, one from admin and one from PD. There was three injuries in the month of December, two in PD and one in the maintenance department. There was no civil service meeting for the month of December due to no items, no separations for the month. There was one new hire, Daniel Bueno, part-time grant technician. Our city clerk department prepared agendas and minutes for one regular meeting on December the twelfth, received thirty-six open records requests, responded to thirty-eight and prepared seven publications. Our Parks and Public Works Department collected standing water throughout the city after rain, shoulder work repair on Grijalva Road, Rio Vista and Morocco Street, pond hole repair at the corner of Horizon and Stockyard and Grijalva Neighborhood. We had a tire amnesty from the week of December seventeenth through December twenty-first. Began the construction of the Bovi Rock Wall and assisted recreations for the winter festival. They continue to maintain, mow and groom all city parks. The police department received two thousand one hundred and seventy-four calls for service. There were five male subjects that were arrested related to a shooting that occurred on December the twelfth. Forty-five arrests were conducted in the month. Officers continued training to keep them in compliance with the certification of T clothes. Our planning and zoning department collected thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars, issued two hundred and fifteen permits, nine registrations, two applications and fifty-six letters. Code enforcement had issued thirty-six notice of violations, fifty-two cleared cases and fifty-three citations. Our recreations department had their winter fest on December the sixth. December nineteenth, they had the senior citizen Christmas dance. December twentieth, the employee appreciation luncheon. Attended the OEM Regional Emergency Management Meeting. On December eleventh, they had the HLC meeting, four cases were heard. And kept up with all social media platforms and media inquiries. Our IT departments set up the stormwater hotline, that number is nine one five two seven five one zero three eight and that's to report any stormwater violations. Our police modular network is still in progress. Continue with the upgrades for computers at Chayo and Rio Vista and troubleshooted all IT-related issues for the department. Our grants department continued community outreach support for the twenty twenty census stormwater management educational campaign and at the two thousand nineteen winter fest. Collection review and inventory of stormwater management permit for the year one backup documentation as per TECQ Phase Two as of MS four permit requirements. Administrative closures of seven completed grant projects and completion of the annual report federal grant training. The city auditor reviewed and reconciled the bank statements for the month of November, proposed amendment to policy sixty-six and follow-up audit of the purchasing card program. That is the recap of the highlights for the month of December, do y'all have any questions? Thank you.
Moving on to consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Rene Rodríguez.
Aye.
Mr. Nevado.
Yes.
Ralph Sora.
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colobilla no was present.
Item number eight, public hearing of an ordinance amending ordinance four sixty-six, sections two, definitions, section ten, authority to enter and inspection and section twelve, enforcement, appeal of notice violations for the municipal separate storm sewer system MS four program of the city of Socorro. Six twenty-two, public hearing is now open.
Miriam Cruz, I have a question about third-party service providers that's listed on section two on definitions. I'm just wondering if the city has a way that they're going to be vetting those third-party service providers for this particular ordinance. Thank you.
Six twenty-two, public hearing is now closed. Item number nine, second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending ordinance four sixty-six, sections two, definitions, sections ten, authority to enter and inspection and section twelve, enforcement, appeal of notice violations for the municipal separate storm sewer system MS four program of the city of Socorro.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. The changes before you are to an ordinance that was approved on May sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, providing the legal authority needed to control pollutant discharges in the city of Socorro. The additions are to section two, which is a definition. We have included the authority to enter and inspect to third service, third-party service provider. To answer the question that was brought up, they will have to provide proof of their certifications and training in stormwater inspections. We also have clarified language under section seven on the appeal of notice of violation. Previously it said border of adjustments, we have changed that to be municipal courts. And that's just to clarify the process when a notice of violation is issued, the decision of the city, the municipal courts or their designee shall be final.
Rene Rodríguez.
Aye.
Mr. Nevado.
Yes.
Ralph Sora.
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colobilla no was present.
Item number ten, discussion on action to approve the job description for the community resources officer, a hundred percent grant funded position with an anticipated grant end date of September thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Good evening, mayor and council, and this is just a job description for one of the grants that we were awarded and it's a hundred percent grant funded. And it just has the verbiage of the grant.
Just to clarify, this is a grant, it's money being paid so we can open this position.
Correct.
Okay? So it's not coming out of the city's funds. Aye.
Mr. Nevado.
Yes.
Ralph Sora. Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colobilla no was present.
Item number eleven, discussion on action to approve a resolution five ninety-three, authorizing the submission of a grant application to the office of governor, criminal justice division, fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, general victim assistance grant program for year two of a crime victim advocate personnel for the Socorro Police Department. The city's twenty percent match contribution is nine thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. We require an authorization from city council in order to submit the application to the FY two thousand twenty-one general victim assistance grant program for the salary of year two of a crime victims advocate to assist victims of crime in the city of Socorro. There is a twenty percent match contribution, so the city will contribute nine thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars from the Socorro Police Department's budget. We are requesting thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars for that salary for the crime victims advocate. And if you have any questions, I can answer.
Rene Rodríguez.
Aye.
Mr. Nevado.
Yes.
Ralph Sora.
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colobilla no was present.
Yes.
Item number twelve, discussion on action to approve a resolution five ninety-four, authorizing the submission of a grant application to the office of the governor, criminal justice division, rifle resistant body armor grant for the Socorro Police Department. There is no match requirement for this grant. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Good afternoon, mayor and council, one more time. This is a grant application to the criminal justice division's rifle resistant body armor grant for the Socorro Police Department. We will request fourteen thousand four hundred dollars for the purchase of sixteen body, rifle resistant body armor for our Socorro Police Department's regional tactical team. There is no match requirement for this grant, but we are required to submit a resolution with the application.
Thank you.
Rene Rodríguez.
Aye.
Mr. Nevado.
Yes.
Ralph Sora.
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colobilla no was present.
Yes.
Item number thirteen, discussion on action to approve the city of Socorro to enter into a Texas statewide interoperability channel plan, MOU with the Texas Department of Public Safety.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. We did receive a grant award of twenty-five thousand seven hundred and one dollars and seventy-seven cents via the state homeland security program on October tenth for the purchase of six police radios. In order for us to be reimbursed for those funds, we do need to enter into an MOU with the Texas Department of Public Safety, agreeing to follow the Texas statewide interoperability channel plan and the statewide communications interoperability plan. And so we're here to request that authorization to enter into that MOU.
Aye.
Mr. Nevado.
Yes.
Ralph Sora.
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colobilla no was present.
Yes.
Item number fourteen, discussion on action to approve amendment to policy sixty-six, policy and procedure fuel accountability.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council, Julie Franco, city auditor. I'm here to request and propose the amendment of policy sixty-six for the fuel accountability. To give you a brief history, the city of Socorro has a fuel tank on the Parks and Public Works grounds where all city vehicles and machinery fuel, diesel or gasoline. And on the seventh day of each month, Parks and Public Works Department forwards that transaction summary by account from the fuel managing system program to each department that consumes fuel. Then on the fifteenth, yes, thank you. Then on the fifteenth of each month, the departments that consume fuel certify the consumption for the specific month by making sure it's correct and accurate with the daily logs that each city staff keeps with the unit. Based on the previous field test work I've conducted, I'm proposing on adding verbiage to the current policy, which are items highlighted in. which are items highlighted in yellow on that document. The amended policy now addresses the department that has the fuel tank as parks and public works, not solely as public works. It also indicates for parks and public works to do a field reading on the first of each month and to forward an X D, which is in your item, in your backup. It's currently being done, but it's not stipulated in the policy. Also, the certification document now includes a space for the date to sign it. Furthermore, indicates a forward, for the certification transaction summary by account and activity detail report to the city manager and finance director and addresses who keeps the files. Last, it includes a change on the daily fuel log by addressing it's a vehicle or machinery fuel log rather than just vehicle log, where distinguishes if it's unleaded or diesel, and with a description to be included of which item was fueled. Any questions?
That's great. That'll give us a little bit more insight on what is being used for what type of machinery or vehicles. That is just great. Thank you.
Rene Rodriguez?
Hi.
Cesar Nevades?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colobilla no was present.
Yes.
Item number fifteen, discussion on action to approve amendment to the fixed assets management procedures manual.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
The document that you have with you includes in red the changes made. The changes are substantial, but it's important on how to address and inform the city staff on how to go about on tracking, safekeeping, and disposing, disposing assets purchased. The amended fixed asset procedures manual now references the capitalization of fixed assets, which is a generally accepted accounting principle known as GAAP. By capitalization, it means any fixed asset with a greater value of five thousand dollars is to be classified as long-term assets and depreciated each year. A section of definitions also added to guide the staff. In addition, it includes the responsibilities for the city manager, the finance department, the city clerk, information technology director, department heads, and myself, city auditor, on how to go about when acquiring, transferring, and disposing an asset. It also addresses the purpose of tagging the asset and gives options on how to dispose it and how to go about as well when purchasing an asset through grant monies. The amendment includes two exhibits. Exhibit A is asset disposal form, and exhibit B is transfer asset form. With these forms in place, there's a paper trail that informs what happens to that asset. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rene Rodriguez?
Hi.
Cesar Nevades?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colobilla no was present.
Yes.
Item number sixteen, discussion on action to clarify resolution five ninety-one for Mayor Elia Garcia and city representative Ralph Duran are prohibited from having direct communication with any city employees other than the city manager for any purpose whatsoever.
Good evening, mayor and council. We had received, I received a phone call from mayor and also from Mr. Duran. Just on clarification, I know that there was certain instances where they either didn't think they could call nine one one in case of an emergency. So I went ahead and talked to the attorneys and they have, I guess, need more clarification on how the resolution is written.
Marwan Bati for J. Martinez, I think it'd be appropriate at this time to move into executive session. If we move into executive session, we have to move into it without Mr. Duran and the mayor since this item pertains to them.
And we wouldn't have a court. So we go into executive, we wouldn't have a court without those two representatives.
Okay, so then I'll, we'll just postpone to the next meeting.
I think that's, yeah, that's a good idea then.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to postpone the next meeting. Second.
Rene Rodriguez?
Hi.
Cesar Nevades?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colobilla no was present.
Yes.
Item number seventeen, discussion on action regarding elected official communication directly with city employees.
Make a motion to postpone for the next meeting. Second.
Yeah, I don't think it's possible. Because you were signed, signed up to speak. No, it's just you.
Rene Rodriguez?
Hi.
Cesar Nevades?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colobilla no was present.
Yes.
Item number eighteen, discussion on action to direct staff to amend media policy.
Make a motion to direct staff to look at the media policy and to abolish certain areas like, for example, some of us hide behind the policy, some of us break the policy. Hence, some of us, that includes myself. So with that said, we need to look at it and be able to talk to our constituency. Most of our constituencies come out and say all the time that we leave our constituent in the dark because we don't want to let them know what's going on because we hide behind the policy. And therefore, I think that we should abolish it because all of us have a right and not just go through the mayor. And therefore, that's what I'm asking for, is to change that policy so that we can all have, because it's unfair for, for example, in district four where she has something and she can't come to her public or come out on TV and say, hey, I'm doing this for my community and so forth because the media policy doesn't allow it. And those are the issues that I have, is that what happens if we, we're, we're doing a park in district one and Mr. Nevades also wants to say something to his constituency. He can't because of the media policy. Those are things that I want to be addressed. Also, we, it'll also address the issue of when the media comes and we're doing something wrong, we have to, you know, show face and say, hey, this is what's going on, not hide behind the policy and say, oh, I can't speak because the city doesn't allow me. Those are the things.
Mr. Rodriguez, I'd just like you to refer to item number on the media policy four C three. It does state to avoid a quorum, mayor, mayor pro temp, representative at large, and the district representative in which the issue affects will be allowed to attend the press conference. So that means it is including the representative from where the issue is arising.
Yeah, but no, but some, some of us get ding because the media, for, I'm going to give an example. There was an issue with two, three weeks ago where something happened in the city, of course, and I went out to my constituency because we, I had to talk to them because I had something to discuss because they still wanted to hear from me. Therefore, the media got me because I was outside and yet people are saying that, oh, Rene just went out and broke the media policy. Of course, unintentionally, but what am I going to say to my constituency? No, I'm not going to talk because I'm going to hide behind the, the media policy? No, what is that going to say about the city? Then it shows that always we're going to hide behind a media policy and not let our constituency what's going on. And those are the things that I'm trying to say that we need to address. We need to address that the media policy does not work. Why is it that you're going to ding one or not the other? No, you have every right to talk. That's our first amendment. And those are the things that I, I had an issue. The, the last time that we had this, that I want to abolish it. This is why we need to, because we need to let our constituent know what's going on.
Mr. Duran?
Yes, we do need to let the constituency know. But according to the policy, you're supposed to contact our public information officer, and they're supposed to draft the information so it gets out properly. Not so we go out there and saying things that are none true, not true, or things that are damaging to other people without having all the facts. That's what this media policy was meant for. It was established in January second of nine, of two thousand fourteen. Reason being, at the time, we had a council member who was speaking out and the mayor and another council member didn't like it, so they made the media policy. Then it was updated again on April thirteenth and approved on April nineteenth of two thousand eighteen because the original media policy had no teeth. They, in other words, they say, you can't do it. Okay, fine, you can't do it, but they do it anyway. So then they added teeth to it. In other words, what the media policy does is when the press wants information, we make sure through our public information officer that it is disseminated properly, not just running out there during a meeting and giving information that was given in executive session. That's what this media policy is for, and that's what we need to continue it.
Mr. Rodriguez? I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Vialos was first.
I, I agree with both of you. Number one, I think this policy might step on our constitutional right, for, for one. But two, we have to be careful what we say because, or, or we need to start using the word allegedly because if there's an investigation going on, we can hinder it. So how do we come to a happy medium? How do we make this policy work for all of us? And maybe we should revisit it and, 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 and discuss it with our attorney and find out what part of it is violating our rights as, you know, our constitutional right? And what, what do we need to do from this point forward to protect the investigation or the integrity of the investigation that's going on? Or alleged accusation?
Mr. Rodriguez?
Of course. As Mr. Duran clarified, last year, two years ago in two thousand eighteen, we touched it twice. But the last one, I tried to change it just for that. And he didn't want to. He was very adamant. You don't believe me, go look at YouTube videos and you can see it, okay? It's in the story. What I'm saying is, we have our first amendment right. We need to be able to talk to our constituency. It's just that simple, just that simple. I'm not saying change it to what I'm saying. I'm saying these are my genuine concerns. There are genuinely concerns that I'm just asking to give it to our administration. And they'll look at it and make some changes and bring it up to us. That's all I'm asking.
Mr. Duran?
I agree with Ms. Vialos. There, we do have our first amendment, amendment rights, and they're trampled on all the time. So we do, we do need to protect those, and I agree with you a hundred percent on that. But also, we also need to protect from misinformation going out, from misinformed people. When you go out there and say, we, that means this city council. If you go out there and you say, I as a citizen have this concern, that's different. But when you walk out there during a council meeting and say to the press, we? Well, he's not talking for me, and I know he's not talking for a lot of us. He's talking for himself. So we do need to clarify in this policy. And when there is a violation, I think it needs to be looked at, looked at, and the proper steps taken to prevent it from happening again.
Mayor, we have a speaker, Ms. Cruz.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. You know, I, I gotta say, I don't mean to temper the mood, but as someone who comes to these meetings religiously, one thing is to get information out to your constituents, another thing is to want to go and talk to them after a meeting. Whole different thing is to miss more than or about fifteen agenda items because you're talking to the media. And Mr. Rodriguez, it's, it's upsetting to me because you could have talked to him afterwards, you could have talked to him beforehand. You did talk to him beforehand, you did talk to him afterwards. But it's upsetting to me because you are my representative, and I was hoping that you would be here representing us. And I, and I single you out because I was here. I was here during those agenda items. And, and it's, and it's just, it's frustrating. So it's, it's, yes, I do believe everyone's first amendment right to speak and to be able to talk. I believe that we should have information, which is why I've always talked about adding more stuff to the website and to Facebook and to all our social media. But I also think it's very important to be present for our meetings.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Of course, and I agree.
And I'm sorry, I wasn't punished. You also have already spoken twice, so I think he's done. But I would love to discuss the matter later. Thanks.
Well, of course, and I understand. Most of the stuff you said is correct. Yes, I was outside, but I didn't go talk to the media. I went and talked to these gentlemen in the front. If you don't, talk to them, okay? So if you don't know, don't be saying some fallacies, okay? So all I'm saying is, all I'm saying is, I went out because they wanted to talk to me. They're there in the front. You know, there's no need for, for that, and that's, I said it in my comment at the very beginning. I went out to talk to them. The media got me after I was done with them, and it wasn't a five-minute conversation, okay? So if I miss them, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize, you know? But like I said, I take this very serious.
We don't have a second?
Second. I'll second.
Rene Rodriguez?
Hi.
Cesar Nevades?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colobilla no was present.
Yes. Item number nineteen, discussion on action on status on Mayor Elia Garcia for a hundred dollar fine.
Oh, it's not an act, it shouldn't be an action. I'm just asking, so it shouldn't be, it's just.
Just an update?
It's just an update. There's no action to be taken.
So I received an email from mayor yesterday requesting an invoice. The invoice was sent to her.
Okay.
Then she requested a policy and that's where we're at.
That's right.
And what do you mean policy?
There's no, there's no action, so we just.
The invoice just stated what the motion was, and the motion was that she violated a certain policy. So she requested a backup for that, so that was provided to her today.
Thank you.
Yes, I did receive the invoice.
So do we just delete, do we just delete it because it's a discussion and action?
There, there's no vote to be taken.
I signed up for the item.
I think she, she needs to be heard. It's an item about her.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it, okay.
I did request the invoice from Ms. Rodarte, and this is what the invoice states, so I just was requesting clarification. It says, on December twelfth, two thousand nineteen, a motion was made to adopt a finding that the mayor improperly used city assets for personal benefit and violated city policy thirty-five and to demand that the mayor reimburse the city for the cost of the use in the amount of four hundred dollars. And the city does not endorse the mayor or any other candidate for political office. Motion passed. So that's the motion. And then I did request a copy of policy thirty-five, and I do not see where it states that I need to pay the fine, so I just want a clarification on that. It does state some definitions on what city policy is, and section four A states, the city shall charge a fee for the use of city property listed in section three B, which again, a parking lot is not included in section three B, sufficient to cover the entire cost to the city associated with the physical operation of the facility usage, including maintenance, cleanup, utility, security, et cetera. And I don't believe that there was any expense to the city regarding those, but again, I was requiring clarification from council on that.
I'm pretty much in that meeting, council was the one that set the fine. I think several amounts were discussed, and part of the motion was what they agreed on finding.
And I think what, I'm sorry.
Ms. Vialos?
And I think what Ms. Mayor is saying is she's not, she's not obligated to pay because there's not a policy that says, you know, that she should. But I don't know if the, where it says usage is enough to say you didn't use it even though it was used without our permission.
And all of that was discussed in executive session. I don't know if you recall. And that's why the, the fine was set.
I just would like to be pointed out where it states in the policy the usage exactly, because I couldn't find it. That's why I requested a copy.
I mean, okay, so right now, I, I think the thing is, is that council fine penalized you? If you're in disagreement with that, I, I think that we should place an item on the agenda that you disagree with the fine.
I think the attorneys should be speaking at that point and not us.
At what point?
You have an attorney, right?
I don't, I don't have an attorney for this matter as of yet. I didn't believe I needed one. I can go and get one. I just didn't understand why or exactly where in the policy it states the amount and for what purpose.
There, there is no set amount, and, and this was discussed during executive, and again, they talked. And again, they talked about several different amounts, and they came up with that, and that's just... They made a motion, and council has that authority to penalize.
I do see the authority, but I don't understand what the, exactly why I'm being fined.
I think at this point, we can't speak of it because it's not placed on the agenda. So we would have to put another item or, or take it to our attorney and have the attorney explain it.
Mr. Duran?
I think we need to postpone this item so the attorney can give her an exact reason for this item.
Yeah, what I'll do is, and I'll kinda defer to Jim Martinez on this one because I think he was present at that particular meeting in the executive session. But I think if you postpone the item, he can look at it. Also need to look at the, can look at the minutes from that particular meeting. And we can go back and see, you know, what was the reason, if you need another explanation.
I mean, the reason was that you used City Hall to...
I understand why the reason, but it says that I violated Policy thirty-five, and I read Policy thirty-five from start to end a couple of times, and I didn't see a parking lot included in the list of definitions, and I didn't see where the fine. I did see, like I said, that section, fees for use, but I don't think that there was any maintenance, cleanup, utility, security, or anything other.
Mr. Duran?
Because it does say discussion and action, that's the way it's listed. I'd like to make a motion to postpone this until council or the, our attorneys can give an adequate description and definition of the policies that were violated.
Second.
Senator Nolte?
Aye.
Cesar Nevarez?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent, and Ivan Colombia loves.
Yes.
Order number twenty. Discussion and action to direct staff and city attorney to review and amend ordinance four eighty-one, prohibition of large commercial vehicles parking and storage in a residential and agricultural zoning district. Do you have a motion?
Good evening, Mayor Council. So, Mr. Nevarez and I have received several complaints regarding that new ordinance that came about. And, and I think our biggest challenge here in the city is that we have a city that's agricultural turning into a city. So we have a lot of agricultural businesses that are still conducting business, and sometimes our policies hinder, or, or if they feel that they're hindering. So I think that Mr. Nevarez wanted to bring this just for discussion and see how, or maybe how we can meet in the middle with the agricultural part of, because it, it addresses residential and agricultural. And there's a huge difference between the two.
Mr. Duran?
I think we need to grandfather everybody that's, that has this type of trailers or that type of business because of the fact that we are transitioning from agriculture, but we're still over fifty percent agricultural. So I think the transition that we're, that we're seeing, we need to protect the people that do have these type of trailers on their property. We need to ensure that, that they can, they can continue them and not have to worry about code enforcement coming out and having to move them. Some of them have been there for longer than the city's been there. So I think that's one thing we need to look at.
Mr. Rodriguez?
At this time, I'll make a motion to postpone until Mr. Nevarez gets here because this is his agenda item, and I, I would...
Mr. Nevarez or Mr. Perez?
I mean, Mr., Mr.
It is Mr. Nevarez.
Oh, sorry, my bad, my bad. Okay, okay. No, no, I take that back. No, no. I, 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 what do you?
Ms. yours? Ms. Villalobos?
So, I, I, I totally agree. We should be protecting our agricultural. If this is hindering them, and I don't mean for, for grandfather. I think we should protect our agricultural. This is where we started, and we should not frown on it. I know it says residential and agricultural, correct? That's, that's what... We're not one size fits all. So we, we need, I'm sure we can come up with something that will protect what we still believe in here in the city, which continues to grow every day. We have positive things coming in. Maybe a lot of people don't know, but we have a lot of growth coming in. And so let's protect what we still have.
Mr. Nevarez?
And that's what this is geared towards, okay? Our folks that have, that live somewhat in a residential area slash agricultural, okay? So that's the reason why we have it here, and will be...
Do we have a motion?
Motion to, yeah, to, yeah.
Motion to direct staff?
Yes.
To look into this ordinance and see how we can...
And amend.
Well, and what I recommend is that we have maybe several community meetings just to gather some public input so we can...
Incorporate.
Listen to the pros and the cons, and then bring all that back to council before we make decisions.
Right. So that would be the motion.
We do have several speakers on this item.
What, do we have a second?
Second.
Yes.
Yes, Bernardo Reyes is our first speaker.
Please thank you for having me. I just wanted to address that issue about ordinance four eighty-one. I've lived in my farm for over twenty years on Bondman Road, and I've had it there. I've had my truck and trailer there. It's essential to the everyday operation of my farm, and I need it. And that's why I wanted to address the council to my input on it. I understand where the city of Socorro is coming from as far as trucks being parked all over the roads, you know? It is a problem in Socorro, and it does need to be addressed. But as far as the agriculture of the farms, you know, we need them for our everyday work, everyday operation. So that's the only input that I wanted to put online, that I do need that truck, and I've had it for over twenty years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Miriam Cruz?
I wanna say agriculture is very important, and I'm glad you guys keep going because I hope you never stop. Don't sell your land. But I wanted to say, there, I think we can, we could fix it probably by limiting the purpose of why you would be able to have the eighteen-wheeler or, you know, tr- uh, commercial vehicle in agriculture, as long as we could probably limit it that it doesn't become a parking lot for many, many, many eighteen-wheelers. I think that's the workaround, right? You have use for yours, but not, you don't get to rent out space for all your friends. Not because we don't like your friends, but because it becomes a problem, right? And then, the only other thing I wanted to say is that, I don't, I, I, I was very happy when this ordinance came out. I live more in a very residential area, and there are eighteen-wheelers parking on the streets and stuff. So I was happy when it came out. But obviously, this was probably an unintended consequence. But I don't remember seeing any notice, any flyers about this ordinance going up. I remember there was discussion about it. I personally don't remember seeing anything in the news or on the website or on Facebook. But, but maybe you could educate me, Ms. Rodarte. Thank you.
Ruben Lada?
Mayor, council? On the issue of the container, which I pay taxes for residential and agriculture, uh, the storage shed that I have, I use it for personal household wares, and also it's, it's like a tool shed for me. That's where I work, I have my tools work. And the container is in the, in, that I had, it's been more than fourteen years with me. And where, the area is, it's well-kept. There is no destruction, there, there is no mess. It's well-kept, clean. So to have this item, if it does happen, it would be a burden for me to try, try to find out where I could put all my stuff that I have and, and see how do I, I need to build something, and that's, that money I don't, that I don't have. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
What you all do.
Javier Muñoz?
So I'm also here to speak on behalf of a small family business involving eighteen-wheelers. You know, it's a great honor to speak on behalf of my dad. He's deceased after, uh, since nineteen eighty being established in Socorro. And me and my older brother, he wasn't able to be present, but we were able to inherit the business and make it a way of, of living. It's an honest way of making a living and, and being a productive member of society. We're located on the corner of Alameda and Sun Park, and I do appreciate the fact that you guys, you know, are trying to be reasonable. I believe in that myself. You know, there is a line. We're keeping it very small, no intentions to get bigger. But at the same time, I can relate with the people that spoke where, you know, these rules that we heard about, you know, it's the, the whole livelihood of, of our life, you know, our children. It's our source of income. Our family actually owns, I was counting in my head right now, like five properties that we pay taxes here in Socorro. We're proud members of the city of Socorro. We're not a burden to nobody. We haven't had complaints. We've been there for several years, like I said, since nineteen eighty. And it's just, and we also have a container where we include, you know, includes our tools that keep, helps us keep our business going. And, you know, you have our word to just, you know, keep it clean, keep it without being a burden to nobody, you know what I mean? So we just want the opportunity to just keep our lives as it is. We ain't harming nobody, and thanks for the opportunity to hear us.
Nora Muñoz?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Nora Muñoz. I'm part of the business that my brother just spoke about. From what I can remember, like he mentioned, my dad established this business. He was actually an immigrant, and proud to say that he established this business to better and provide education for his chi- children. And we just wanna continue, as my brother mentioned, just providing and being a good citizen. This is providing income for his family and my mother. And we, we would just like to be grandfathered, as Mr. Duran mentioned. Our, the trucks that are part of the business are not hindering the streets. They're not encroaching in any other neighbors. So if you can provide and oversee and, and just study that area that you all are discussing about. Thank you for your time.
I just, I just have a question. Your address, is it the, the corner? You used to have a big tree, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And you knocked it down?
That's correct.
So I'll know that it's not inside the...
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Duran?
With regards to that tree, it did save my car from a hailstorm. I did drive on your property, and I apologize, but it was a bad hailstorm, and it did save my car. It did. There was about four of us. My time up?
Your time up.
Okay.
Ms. Villalobos?
I'm not done yet, please. Thank you. Well, they gave me more time. You know, when, when I see things like this, I realize that you are the people that put us in office. We have to do what is in the best interest of the majority of the people of Socorro. So we have to listen to you. That's our job. That's what we're elected to do, not to... You know, when we were elected, we didn't get divine intelligence that tells us all the right things to do. We listen to you. And then, that's why when we have these public hearings, we need you to come out. We need you to voice, let us know what is on your mind. We wanna protect these businesses because there's so many businesses in Socorro that are ag-related, and they do use this type of equipment. So I just urge you when, and, you know, if we can get, if you can get their numbers from where they signed up, to be sure and call them and let them know that there will be public hearings. And we want you to come out and bring your friends that do have businesses so we can all hear from you, and that we can do what is in the best interest of the, of the citizens of Socorro.
Ms. Villalobos?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna address this to Mr. Medina in just a second, but I just wanna tell everybody, we're here to listen to you. We're here to do the right thing. Unfortunately, for some of you, the law does not allow us because it's, we're getting into a different, uh, it's either part, some of, some of these streets are still county, and we can't get in there. As much as we want to help, we can't. We can't, we cannot touch. But we can try to get to that point where it becomes part of our city. But the other thing I wanted to address was containers and storages. They're here to talk about that. Obviously, they've been worn or they've been visited by our city, letting them know that they can no longer keep... And what, what are these containers? What's the problem with these containers?
Specifically, I don't know on a case-by-case basis, but generally what the ordinance prescribes or prohibits is storage containers within these properties. So for example, if somebody goes to Home Depot and buys a storage, that is allowed. However, the, the address here through the ordinance is larger containers. It could be the tractor-trailer that could be parked there as well. So I think that when it was presented to this body through the hearings, it was described where we have several properties that have semis overnight or have these large containers that are stationed in the facilities and are prohibited now.
Okay. Alrighty, so I guess we're gonna have to visit and see what kind of, type of zoning they have and the purpose, and maybe have them register what they do have that's, that are being used for work? And anything else is not, something like that, you know, not allowable?
Right, I think what we'll do is that certainly we'll review the ordinance. Uh, in, in these type of cases where there is direction to reexamine said ordinance, we develop a test. So part of the test, in lieu of the grandfathering, we require certain things to be met. So if you meet those conditions, then essentially you're allowed to do it. Now, moving forward, we can also provide the same opportunity if we prescribe certain engineering things to be done with said property.
Okay. I see.
Mr. Duran?
Uh, if you, um, until we have these public hearings, could we have a freeze on enforcement of this? I'm asking a question.
You're not gonna amend the ordinance without that, and you couldn't? Because you, yeah, I think the answer to your question is yes, one of two things. I think the administration could do that on its own steam, just say, hey, just out of, just as a prudential matter, we're just gonna stop enforcing this for now. And I think the posting language is broad enough, council could also instruct administration to do that until the next meeting, certainly.
Okay. I'm gonna make your motion.
If we're, if we're gonna do the hold on the semi-trucks, that's sort of additional, because that's what the ordinance...
Was initially about, yeah.
Because, I mean, that's what we was brought in because we were getting a lot of complaints of tractor-traders in residential areas. And that's part of what we're addressing in this ordinance.
And if I'm not mistaken, we have a huge case working right now regarding eighteen-wheelers in a residential area. And that would stop them, that would stop us from moving forward with...
Correct, you would freeze everything according to the things that we have.
Well, couldn't you just use language to address storage for agricultural or purposes?
Or would it have to be the whole?
Yeah, and Ms. Colombia loves brings up a good point, the pending lawsuit, that's a problem. Yeah, you can't stop that. I, I, yeah, I'm, if we, if we wanted to discuss the pending lawsuit, we probably, we're not properly posted for that, and so we need to do that later. But it's an issue, and if you suspend enforcement of, of the ordinance altogether, I'm concerned you're gonna affect that lawsuit in a way that was not intended. I, I, my advice in light of that is, I would advise against that.
What about a certain section?
I can't tell you off the top of my head exactly what the effect would be on the lawsuit.
If you just select a section, a very specific section, that way you don't...
Of the ordinance?
Correct.
Ms. Villalobos?
How about, how about extending? Can we, can we request that we... How about, how about extending? Can we, can we request that we extend, allow them more time? More time before they have to remove anything, instead of, I don't, what's the, the timeframe, Mr. Medina?
So, normally, the process of enforcement is that code enforcers visit the area. If there's a detection, uh, they post a notice of violation where they're instructed to contact the department. And then also, anywhere between seven to ten days may be given. Uh, if they communicate with the department, uh, the code enforcer may extend that time. Uh, if they appear, uh, before the judge, this means that the notice of violation was not, uh, addressed. And when they appear before the municipal court, the judge may afford an additional thirty days or whatever discretion she provides.
And then that's what I'm saying. They still have to go through the motion, but give them the ample more time for us to be able to review and perhaps correct. Let's see.
Let me suggest this. Now, now that I look at it and think about that case, I think there are other issues at play in that case. And I think it's not just this ordinance. So, I think you're okay if you wanted, you're not gonna have the effect on the lawsuit that I was concerned about. If you wanted to suspend enforcement of the ordinance, I think you could do that. I think it's better, as long as it's short-term. And I think you could also be specific, mayors, to your point, you know, for the agricultural, only on agricultural areas, maybe not residential areas altogether. Or only on residential areas, you know, that's an R2 or something like that. I, I would just make it more specific. Yes.
Evening, mayor and council. Uh, Dave Burton, chief of police. So, one of our traffic officers has been going out and, uh, giving enforcement based on this ordinance. Uh, most of the affected areas are residential, has to do with, uh, tractor-trailer trucks parked in residential areas. I would be concerned if you suspended or freeze it based on the fact that those cases are still pending. And that would give, uh, or provide a, uh, defense, an immediate defense to court.
Yeah, that, that, and you can't, and you can't go back and ding him again for that.
That, that's a good point. I mean, it's, that will be your problem. May, may, maybe in light of the, what you've heard today, maybe limit it to suspending enforcement in agricultural areas only?
Ms. Elavos, it was your motion?
No, it was his.
Mr. Nevades.
Mr. Nevades.
Yeah, just keep it as...
Mr. Duran?
What was your motion?
To allow, uh...
Staff to...
Staff to go back and do some research.
To review the ordinance?
Yeah.
And conduct the, uh, public meetings?
And that's it?
And no suspending, um, for agricultural only?
We could just, uh, leave, um, semi-trailers or semi-trucks out, but not the trailers. 'Cause then, uh, we have a lot of, uh, construction companies that use those trailers as storage. And technically, they can be sighted on a building site. So, I think that's what some we need to look at also. So, just on semi-trucks, can we do that, Jim?
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, to be, the simple answer is yes, you can. And you, you can do that both for suspension, just temporarily, and then...
Tempor- until after the, we have hearings.
But, this is just a thought. It occurs to me that you're talking about enough permutations here. A- and it seems like there's, I, I think Ms. Rodarte is, is right. It might, this might deserve, this might merit a greater process. As in, talking to more people like the chief and like inviting ci- residents to meetings and that sort of thing, rather than just deciding what that change is gonna be here.
Well, it's not a change, it's a temporary fix.
The suspension?
This, mm-hmm.
Right, yeah, I get that part. I was talking about the, uh, the specific direction to amend the ordinance to do X, Y, or Z. That's what I was saying, you might wanna follow a greater process before that.
Right, okay. So, so we're, we're going to stay the way it is, um, they're gonna review it?
Exactly.
And that's it?
Right.
That is it?
With all the meetings. And make it like at six or seven, so that people can come? I mean, because you make it at five, we know that it's very horrible for traffic to get here, and people are not gonna show up. So, let's make it at a reasonable time?
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevades?
Yes.
Rob Duran?
Yes.
Victor Pérez Essexos and Iban Colombia.
Yes.
Item number twenty-one. Discussion on action to direct staff and city attorney to review and amend ordinance that determines the setbacks of ma- major arterials.
Okay, guys, this is my, my item here, and, um, another, here we have another situation where an ordinance is, um, hindering, um, businesses, and one of the families is here for one of the businesses. But, um, because we are asking for too much, uh, for example, this particular, um, business, we're asking for in, inside their property, sixty feet, twenty-five in the back, and, and ponding area. So, what does that leave them when they have a hundred and thirty-seven, um, feet? So, um, uh... This particular business, but I'm talking about other business, but this particular business already has, it's already in an estab- it's on North Loop Road. You have double lanes, so you have four lanes. And, um, they're asking for another sixty and, and twenty-five to the back. So, I'm asking that we, um, review this amendment and see how we can help the small mom and pops.
Do we have a motion?
What's the address?
This particular address is, I, I'm, I'm talking about this, this, this particular ordinance is hurting businesses. Of course, there's one here that's, that's, you know, one of those families, but I don't have a specific address. It's, um... What's the address?
But we can certainly get that, though.
Yeah.
But...
No, he didn't sign up? Oh, you didn't sign up?
So, my...
Yes.
Mr. Adrias?
Uh, the, the issue is, is that it's a major arterial, and we always ask for sixty feet. So, if it's on an arterial, is that what, what it is? It's, that's why I was asking for the address, because if we're talking about the gentleman that's coming up, then that's the issue, is that I need to see the address, because if we ask for sixty feet, why are we gonna change it if it's on, on a major arterial?
Well, at the time...
That's what I'm saying.
At the time of the, uh, ordinance, there was no double lanes. Um, now there is. So, what's the sixty feet for?
Well, we don't know, I don't know where the address is at.
And it's, and it's our, well, it doesn't matter, but it's our ordinance.
But it does matter, because what I'm trying to say is, how many streets in the city are so narrow that we have to widen them, that we already encro- we have to encroach and take and use intimate domain?
Or you can provide the address.
Thank you. So, our address is, uh, ten, ten, seven, two, eight North Loop. We also, uh, own the property next door to it. Um, if I may speak on the dimensions of our total land area. We have a width of seventy-one feet, length of a hundred and thirty feet, and a total area, square feet, of nine hundred and twenty, nine thousand, two hundred and thirty feet. After the restrictions, which is sixty feet from the front, twenty-five from the back, and ten from the sides. We're looking at sixty-one feet in width, forty-five feet in length, and, uh, two hundreds, two thousand, seven hundred and forty-five. So, we came, we went from nine thousand, two hundred and thirty to two thousand, seven hundred and forty-five that we're able to build in. You know, um, like my, my father is actually the owner of this property, and I'm the one who's trying to build a, a business there. Uh, like my father says, um, with what we're trying to build, which is a gym, we're trying to build a gym in the area, Socorro area. We won't, we'll probably have enough space to build a taco shop. I mean, we just don't have enough space to build almost anything, and the businesses next to us, they have bigger, uh, buildings and they are accord, they're probably grandfathered. Which, uh, it sucks for the rest of us, because there are gonna be buildings that, and businesses that are gonna be built down that street. And we're just not gonna have enough room to build anything, or maybe something super small, tiny.
Mayor, if I may? Uh, so, just to give the bodies some background information, is that we are aware that this, uh, petitioner has gone to the Board of Adjustments. Uh, the case is actually pending. Um, and so I believe that the next Board of Adjustment meeting, uh, there's gonna be a determination. So, in its relationship to process, obviously, there's several mechanisms of doing this. Uh, but I just wanna give you all the understanding that simply because you follow the process and you come before a body and they provide you a potential recommendation that is not what the individual wants, that's why the BOA was set up. So, the Board of Adjustment, through the powers that are granted by the state, have the full authority to specifically look at the petition and say, on this property, yes, we will allow or we won't allow. What the motion should go forward, uh, will trigger for us in the planning, uh, department to come back with an idea of a study, so that we can look at this. Uh, there are no text-op requirements to have a setback. That's left at the local level. But again, is that everything that we do will affect whether it's text-op, whether it's emergency service, whether it's economic development. So, I think in its relationship to how you want the department and city staff to look at this, obviously, you have the authority to do so.
So...
We could postpone it, see what the Board of Adjustment says, and at the same ti- and at the same time...
Why postpone it? Not, it's not, it's not, we're not talking about this family, we're talking about many families, or not families, but business owners, small business owners.
I think that we need to leave, uh, the setbacks as is, because if the city's growing, we need to leave enough space for the streets to be available, to be widened.
If, if they've already been widened.
Let me finish. We don't want to hurt the small businesses, but we can direct those small businesses to go through Board of Adjustments. And then Board of Adjustments can allow them to not have to follow these setbacks because of the specific location, the street has already been widened, but we don't wanna affect future growth.
Well, I wish the Board of Adjustments would hear you, but because of this law, I believe Board of Adjustments has denied it. No?
No, ma'am. As I mentioned before, the case, uh, was actually postponed from December. It will be heard in January. The BOA is established by state law. And so, the authority that they have is a avenue to resolve these things. In many cases, whether it's code enforcement, uh, or it's the building official that has red-tagged somebody because somebody was building without a permit. That petitioner can go to the BOA and say, look, this is what happened, and if you allow it, then I'll do this. Again, that's an avenue. So, it's the same thing as the other committees that are around. Uh, and of course, they can always come to you as well.
Mr. Arte?
Um, and I just wanna, because, just like Mr. Nevades, I have also received several complaints from several businesses that are small businesses that feel that we, as a city, are just putting barriers and barriers in order for them to perform their jobs and, and the setbacks. And I think what Ms. Colombia loves is asking is just some type of... Not to change the setbacks, but different scenarios. Um, if the lot is in a specific place, could they, you know, could they, could we look at it and have a little bit of flexibility to allow? Without allowing any safety concerns or, and I think that's, that's...
Right, no safety.
Kind of from where, when we sat together, that was more of her concern, and seeing how not to change or to affect the whole city and the whole. But more of what can we put in the language that would allow staff to be more flexible? Um, and consistent when it comes to these type of businesses. And I think that's, that's her goal.
Ten, seven, two, eight?
Ten, seven, two, eight, yes, sir. North Loop.
And just to clarify, this particular case has not gone before Board of Adjustments, correct? This address, the ten, seven, two, eight?
Yes, this, this is a specific case that I've been briefed.
So, it's pending?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
From a legal perspective, I can tell you, Mike, Mike has it right. I mean, the, the state, the whole scheme of establishing zoning regulations and other land use controls has built into it the, the BOA, the Board of Adjustment. And, and that, again, he's, he's right there. Every, every major city has one. Uh, most small cities have one. It's statutory, it exists. And this is its role in life. This is what it was created for. But my point is, the, the overall scheme recognizes, look, in certain situations, under certain circumstances, it's gonna be real hard on this particular property. And that's, the, the legal theory is, and that's why we go to the Board of Adjustment, so that they can make an individualized assessment and say, yeah, we need to give you a break on that setback, and we'll give you a break on the side setback, yeah, okay, we'll, we'll fix that. That's, that's the theory.
It's 'cause I'm trying to plug in the, uh, the address, ten, seven, two, eight, North Loop, but it doesn't give it to me. It gives me the shopping center.
It was ac- it was actually just made into a commercial, um, to a commercial property. Uh, I don't, I don't have the actual, um, address where it was before, but it was the, the opposite side of Lydia Road, so it would've said the number and then Lydia Road.
Oh, it was on Lydia Road?
Yes.
Do you know what, it, it's currently there?
What, it's currently the address right now?
No, no, what's there?
It's, it's right next, if I, I'm sorry, if I remember correctly, I saw it next to that, was it a car wash?
Mm-hmm, it's like a car wash, and then there's a...
And like in front of, uh...
Peter Piper.
Peter, Peter Piper, there's a car wash sideways, right?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. And it's, it's the two properties that are, well, right now, we're talking about that one property, right next to it.
Next to the, I think it's a tire shop, I think that's where it is.
Well, and, you know, you know what, guys, I have to tell you, uh, in speaking to your father, Mr. Dosal, he mentioned that, um, he had already gone to the Board of Adjustment, correct?
Yes.
Or was he mistaken where he went?
I, I don't know, uh, what his...
Your dad had already gone to Board of Adjustment?
So, we did come to the BOA meeting, and we did propose our, propose, um, restr- uh, restrictions, like I guess. What we wanted to build, uh, is to see if they would give it to us, um, which that was denied. They told us, they basically told us, no, you're asking for too much.
Ba- based on...
Based on what we proposed to them and, uh, which, with the difference of what they gave us.
Well, no, based on the rules that are right now set, they said no, based on... And they, one of the members said, you know, as lo- you know, if you can't make it smaller, we can't, you know? But they told them, they did, you, they did a, your dad went and got an engineer?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Uh, he got a professional engineer to draw everything, how, you know? And, um, and that's, I mean, he's trying to buy, Mr. Dosal owns, Dosal Auto Shop, just so you know, on Horizon, okay? He just bought another building right on Horizon. Um, he lives in Socorro, and now they wanna build a gym. So, they are, they're fully invested. And I think, um, for people like them, and, you know, that are fully invested in our city, we should give them the opportunity to look at the rules and, and see. Because if it's this business, I mean, the lot, all the lots that are right there, most, some of them are mixed, residential, some of them are commercial. One day, they might wanna be commercial, and they're gonna fall into the same boat.
Mr. Duran?
You know, small business is the backbone of our city. We don't have large businesses. And I think we need to find a way to legally allow him to build his gym, 'cause some of us could use a gym.
Exactly.
Be the first one to admit it, but, um, this is some of the, something that, we don't have that many gyms in Socorro.
I don't think we have any. We have the D-Was.
Yeah, but I mean, we have to go up to Planet Fitness and...
Yes, exactly.
Or anywhere else. And we're trying to keep people in Socorro to do their shopping, to do their, uh, everything. And the more businesses like his, and Mr. Dosal has his auto park, I mean, he's fully, he's a small business owner.
Yes.
And he's trying to, now his son's trying to build a business. How can we help him? What is there that we can do as a city council? To help him with his, with his project? He's trying to do it the right way.
Exactly.
And that's why I think we need to figure out a way that we can help him build his gym, and I'll be the first one to buy a membership.
Mayor, if I may? So, I, I think that we, we wanna make sure that you understand from the staff's perspective, is that we're simply advising. Uh, we can speak on what the Board of Adjustment has done. Uh, my understanding is that they have yet to deny it. So, I do recognize that they are doing things the right way. Uh, you are required to have an engineer provide plants and et cetera. Uh, one of the things here with the arterial component is that it affects every single zoning district, everyone. So, it doesn't matter if it's the arterial. The arterial component is tied back to every district. So, uh, however you direct us to, to provide and, and do the research, understand that it may trigger a full revision of zoning, the one that we currently have.
Mr. Adrias?
Just think, I'm, I'm not even gonna have a discussion... Just in, I'm, I'm not even gonna have a discussion on this, I'm just gonna say this, I, I get it and I understand. I also need to make appointments, because I have four business owners that are having trouble opening here in Socorro. I do not understand why isn't. I hear all from Asen Malacara, they're not courteous, they're giving me the runarounds, they're doing all of this. We need to find a, a medium, because we need small business. It is, and like Mr. Zorin, believe it or not, I agree with him, it's the corner of our, of our, of our city, it's the backbone. Small businesses is what we got, and if we're not letting anybody come into the city, and I will say this, and not to knock anybody down here in Socorro, but it's not about, oh, because, let's do it because they're invested in the city, or, or because they live here in the community, no, because I'm not singling out them or preferring them over anybody that comes out, uh, that doesn't live in Socorro, it's straight across the board. We need to help them, we need to let them thrive in our city, because, like I said, it is the backbone of our city. Um, so, I, I, I get it and I understand, um.
Now, this, his case is coming up, when did you say, when's, when's the meeting?
I believe next week, ma'am.
So the meeting's next week, um, and we're not gonna be ready to, you know, look at any changes, possible changes, or any, anything like that. Is there any way we can ask for, for an extension for them, for this one particular case?
Mayor? Mr. Arta?
I would really recommend that he goes through the BOA process, because what if they do grant him the variance? So if the variance is granted, then he'll be able to build. Now, if he doesn't, we still are gonna work on fixing the, the ordinance, so he'll still have that opportunity. If he's denied at the BOA, depending on what you give us today, we can go back and revisit and see if we can work with him in the future.
Well, okay, but if, if they're denied, they're denied for a year, they can't come back for a year, correct?
But that's just for a variance, not to counsel, and you're asking for an ordinance.
Okay. Right, and I, so I need to clarify that. And, and just so you guys know, one of the, one of the board members, I don't know who, he didn't say, walked up to him and he says, this is gonna be very difficult for us to pass, because of what's set in place. Basically telling them, no way, so.
One of the board members told them?
I don't know who.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, we'll just let it run, and then we'll just, if you guys want, what we can do is, is have our staff look at it.
Okay.
In conjunction with, see what happens, and then they'll bring us a finding.
But I also wanna make very clear that whatever we come back, we might come back not with a favorable answer to the applicant.
You need to go and do what you guys need to do, bring us back your recommendations.
But we'll come with a, with a, a recommendation that, that will fit the city.
Got it, I'm just making sure everybody's on the same page, everything was set, and, and there's no misunderstandings. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So, so the motion is to, uh, give it to administration, take a look at it, see, and, to our staff, uh, for recommendations, uh, and then bring back to council. As soon as possible, too.
Do we have a second? Second.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. A couple of things, I think you guys talked about a lot of stuff that wasn't posted for today. Um, I don't think that's right, and I just wanna bring that to your attention. Um, I understand that there is a particular individual, or maybe few individuals, why this item was brought up. Um, but I don't think it's fair to the public that a lot was discussed that we wasn't posted for. That's one. Um, two, I also don't think that it's fair, I have nothing against you, but that this gentleman was allowed to come here and speak back and forth when others have not been allowed, especially because this item was not posted for him specifically. And if it was, it's not stated in the motion.
It's posted.
The, the action talks about the ordinance specifically. That's, that's all I'm saying. And last, um, I also don't think, um, well, I don't know if the whole ordinance needs to be changed, but if it's only affecting people in certain areas, then why aren't we just discussing about those specific areas, instead of changing the entire city? Um, because again, that might have some unintended, uh, consequences that we're not hoping for. So if there's a specific area that this applies to, then why not allow it? Um, and obviously, when I read this, or when I found out what it was about, um, the first thing that popped into my head was a variance. Uh, why aren't we getting, why isn't whoever needs it getting a variance? Um, and it looks like they are, it looks like that process is ongoing. So I guess, thank you.
Aye.
Mr. Nevada?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number twenty-two, discussion and action to direct staff to create a job description to hire an in-house attorney for the day-to-day operation.
Make a motion to postpone for next meeting, so that Mr. Perez could be here too. Because I know that Ms. Vialos wants to ask some questions in executive, right?
Well, I would, I wanted to, uh, take this to executive, I don't see how Mr. Perez would make a difference. Do you wanna explain one?
Because I, I would prefer him to listen too, because if we bring it back and then we postpone it, then we're gonna go back to executive, so that he can hear the same thing that we did. That's.
I, I have no, no problem, if, if nobody else has a problem with that.
Well, I think it was your motion, so I think you should, you're the one that brought it.
So we have a motion to postpone, do we have a second? So the motion dies, now do we have another motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and take to, into executive?
And take to in sec, in, in executive, yes.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Part of the motion is to go into executive, you need to identify why. The, either it's, the ones that occurred to me, there are other reasons, but it's either to consult with your lawyers or. I was gonna say, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure the person, I mean.
Personnel matter.
Yeah, I think you can do it in a personnel.
Yeah.
So, to discuss.
Just personnel matters.
Is that the only thing we have in executive?
An executive?
No, we had one other item.
What do we have, under executive?
No, that's it, that's.
That's all I know.
Oh, that's it, okay.
Okay.
So, move to executive.
Second.
To move to executive, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Nevada?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Seven thirty-eight, we are now in executive session.